We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To comply, in the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, my nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder that the meeting is being recorded by Norton Media. If anybody else is recording, we just need to know that. And we're going to start with the Need Grants Announcement. Is that you, Jen?
Um, I would, I, you are, our Need Representative is here this evening.
Where would you like us?
Right at the table, please.
Oh, okay. There's a lot of them. Hello. Thank you for having us. I'm Kate Conway, and I'm lucky enough to be the president of Need. Need, in case you don't know, is Norton Embracing Educational Development. We're an educational nonprofit here to support the schools of Norton. I'm here with several board members and our treasurer and vice president, lots of us here, and a whole bunch of teachers and staff who came to present, which is great. And we're here to announce the recipients of our grant program for this year. We received 11 grant applications totaling a whopping $33,000. We didn't award that, we can't close. We were able to award just over $20,000 this year for 10 grants at five schools. So we're pretty excited about that. Tonight, we'd like to thank all the teachers who submitted the grant requests and acknowledge all this year's recipients. If you are in the audience tonight, when you get to your school, if you'd like to come up and talk about your grant, that would be great. We're going to start with JCS.
Hello. We are on the SEL Curriculum Committee at JCS, and we have implemented Character Strong, the SEL curriculum that the district is using, and, or for prepaid A- eight. And so we decided that it would be great if we could have a library for all of the classroom teachers to have books that matched all the character traits that we're teaching. So we came up with a list of five books per character trait, per grade level. So teachers now, as they're implementing the Character Strong curriculum, can go to the library bucket that we have, find a book that matches the character trait that you're teaching, put it back in to then share with the next teacher. So we wanted to make sure that teachers at our school had access to picture books that were able to supplement the curriculum that we're now using.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Then we also have, Principal John Marcus requested funds to bring Joshua Weiner, a Boston-area mosaic artist, and to work with all the students from PK to third grade on a mosaic mural that will wrap around the JCS library. Dr. Marcus received a $1,500 grant from Need to partially fund this project, and with additional funding from the SPO and a grant from the Mass Cultural Council will help to arrive at the overall cost. As a hub of the school and an area for many community events, the library has the potential to celebrate Norton, its children, and the natural environment that's from JCS. Every student will add to the mosaic and can point to their contribution when they're finished. And then we have two grants for Little Lancers, JCS, LGN, and the Yale.
So the speech-language pathologists are here. You can come up and the communication stations grant, if you're here. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm here representing the speech and language department in Norton and wanted to just express our gratitude to Need for enabling us to have this digital platform back. The elementary speech department has utilized this digital platform called Ultimate SLP over the last couple of years since returning from school from this COVID closure. It is a digital library containing over 40,000 real-life images, animated and interactive games and activities designed to target individualized student goals based on their needs such as articulation, language, social communication, and auditory memory, et cetera. It can be used at an individual, small and large group settings. And unfortunately, last year, due to the fiscal budget, this, these memberships were not renewed, and Need stepped in, provided memberships for all elementary SLPs and SLPAs. So we really appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Kayce Russo, the Northern Elementary Special Education Director for the district. We, myself and Janet Scheress, one of the speech therapists at the LGN, worked with the Flutie Foundation to get a communication station installed at the LGN. And it is a giant communication board that is being installed over there. Flutie Foundation will only do one per town, and Need is gracious enough to allow us to build one at the JCS as well. So students who are at recess or pre-8 and 3 will have a mode of communication with one another, whether they're struggling with language, or some of our students with an L background, will have access to communicate with their peers and staff while outside playing, and we're very grateful.
The next grant is from the Yale, the music teacher here. How do you do?
Just hi. Thank you so much, yes, appreciate it. Hi, my name is Doug Dufresne. I teach fourth and fifth grade music at the Yale Elementary School, as well as fifth grade band, and I applied for a Need grant based off of some, just some different things I noticed we needed in our band room in my first year here at Norton. And they were gracious enough and kind enough to grant us a brand-new bass drum, which is about $1,500 and something our students cannot afford. Suspended cymbals, crash cymbals, concert tambourine. You'd be surprised how much a tambourine costs and all the different mallets that go along with it. So these are things our students could not afford that we now have, and that elevates us to where other schools in surrounding districts are and kind of puts us on the same playing field, which is great. It's all equipment that will hopefully last us for years and years to come, 10, 15, maybe even 20 years if we take good care of it. So, thank you very much, I appreciate everything.
Hopefully we funded some earplugs for all of us.
It's all the noise makers.
He's going to be always so pleased with us. Here at the middle school, we had another music grant that was awarded. It was for Dr. Bianca. He is recuperating from the lovely band and chorus concert that went on here last night. He really needed help to transport equipment because he doesn't actually have designated rooms. At every time the band would come in, the chorus would come in, he had to set up all these chairs and then put them away. And this was taking him an inordinate amount of time. He had this equipment at other schools, but not here at the middle school. So he awarded just over $2,300 so that he would have the ability to move chairs and stand and put them away and more easily move things around so he could spend more time actually teaching these students. The other grant we have here for the middle school is from the grades of science teachers. Mr. Abdaugh, Mr. Semblest, do you want to come up or? Come over.
Hello, everybody, I have a little bit here from Need. So this is Mr. Abdaugh, Mr. Semblest, we're both seventh-grade teachers here at Norton Middle. We requested a grant for funding a science simulation activity called Gizmos through a company called Explorer Learning. It brings some well-developed, high-quality science simulations to the classroom. Need actually fully funded the grant for $1,840, which is fantastic. So that gives both of us access to this platform and all of our students across both of the teams at seventh grade to have access to the simulations for assignments. Everything is based on the NGS science curriculum standards, so all the Gizmos are aligned with standards in the seventh-grade curriculum. The platform itself does attach them to things that we're learning in the classroom and kind of bring a more interactive experience for the kids to explore the standards and content outside of just the standard textbook experience. So these actually, these simulations are pretty well-aligned with the MCAS, and the new MCAS that's being developed for eighth grade, which are actually taking simulations right from this company, and they're very similar. So kids will have access to this material this year going into eighth grade. They won't be surprised when MCAS comes around and they're working with the same tools for their testing at the end of the year for their eighth-grade science testing. I think that's my big bit on that.
This is my first year in Norton, and I spent the previous 19 in Fall River. And last year, through a lot of teeth-pulling and arm-bending, I got us Gizmos for eighth-grade science. And to see kids after MCAS come up to you and say, "Mr. Abdaugh, what we did in Gizmos is, looks just like the MCAS." So we knew we're on the right path with that. And a lot of the lessons, they align with what we do, all the lessons align with what we do, and it's a great extension of what we do in the classroom. Therefore, we're going to be able to assign Gizmos for homework. There's going to be class time with it. It's, it's just going to be a great tool for us. And like Mr. Sembleinsky said, when they get to eighth grade and they see that first pilot test, they're not going to be surprised at all, and you'll be proud of it.
That's great, thank you so much.
Last, but certainly not least, we will move on to NHS. We had three grants that we funded for NHS this year. The first is the NHS Music Department. The Music Department will travel to New York City to participate in the Heritage Music Festival. This is the first time the Music Department will travel for a music festival out of state. Alexandra Wright, Choral Director at NHS Music Department, requested a grant to help with the funds needed to make this trip possible for every participating student and parent. Need has partially funded this grant for $3,800. Traveling and performing in New York City will be a fantastic experience for students wondering if they want to pursue music in the future. Not only will this trip be educational through masterclass workshops and accredited festivals, but it will also be community building through shared experiences. During this trip, they'll be sightseeing, seeing community building through, sorry, seeing a Broadway musical, Hamilton, and attending dinners with the entire music community. The trip will end with the festival and an awards dinner cruise. The trip aims to immerse students in musical culture while providing them with activities that expand their voice in the world. We had a, one. We also had a grant from Kate Rego, is she here?
I'm Kate Rego.
I'm Paula Bysin.
It was actually Paula's idea.
So AP Biology, AP Environmental Science, and regular biology. We do labs on dissolved oxygen, and we didn't have the testing in order to do it. We were kind of using other things, like balloons blowing up and all of that stuff. So I had seen a lab equipment list from AP Environmental Science on a Facebook community page that I don't belong to, so we started looking at it, and it just kind of evolved from there, so.
So we are collaborating with David Cunningham in the Technology Department because he has gigantic, like awesome, fish tank setups. So we're going to be using them to design experiments to measure the flow of oxygen between plants and animals. So for the grant, they funded the purchasing of aquatic plants, which arrived this week, so he's setting up the tanks for that. We also got the oxygen monitors this week.
Which I'll be looking at.
Yeah, we're all going to plan around with them next week. So we're going to be measuring, or students are going to be able to do inquiry-based experiments where they're able to measure like the effect of light on photosynthesis, or they're able to measure the effects of different environmental conditions on the fish in order to be able to undergo respiration.
And at some point, we're hoping that students will, Environmental Club or even Honor Society decide that they want to design their own experiment, and then they have the means of actually doing that.
And then they can do water quality testing as well, which is really relevant. Pollution and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so there's a couple sites in Norton that we were kind of, I was looking at to see if we could start collecting data and keep a running log year to year, so.
That's great.
And the final grant that we awarded is actually to David Cunningham, the construction arts teacher at NHS. He requested a grant for an innovative construction project in which students will look at a construction project through the lens of impacting a societal problem, i.e. homelessness and housing insecurity, and potential solutions to the problem. Need has fully funded this project for $3,500. Mr. Cunningham is looking to obtain more than just a grant, but to use the grant to create seed money for future projects while designing, creating, and then taking a tiny house to market. So again, in total, we were able to give out just over $20,000. We can't do that without the community of Norton. Every time you get an N on your driveway, or buy an Arts Remember Project, or drop off a bag of clothing in our Savers Drive, or participate in a big auction, our big auction in the spring, you are funding these grants. We rely largely on our fundraisers and not corporate sponsors, so it's real, so it's really the community participating there with us that makes it possible. So to you, Norton, we say thank you.
So this is always one of my favorite nights, you guys done?
Yeah.
This is always one of my favorite nights, right? Because not only do we get to acknowledge all of your hard work and everything that you do for our schools, but it's also really great to hear from the teachers and how what you do really impacts them. That's really a great thing about tonight. So again, just thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you put into making our schools great. We certainly couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
If I may, I just also want to thank Need. I think it's really important to recognize the difference that they make in our classrooms on a daily basis. All of the projects that were described tonight are nothing crazy. They're things that our students should have, they're, these are things that our teachers deserve to have as resources in their classrooms. And we would not be able to fund these projects, to put these resources in the hands of our students and our teachers, without Need. We are having a really hard time funding education. This is not just a Norton problem. We are very fortunate to have Need as our partner, so we are able to do some of this. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
If the teachers who presented wouldn't mind, just coming over here for a quick picture. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to the minutes. So we have minutes from October 23rd. Did you guys all get a chance to take a vote? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Push back for a second.
I think, yeah, I think.
Yes, there was, it was a revision.
Yeah.
From the, like, fourth meeting.
Okay.
So we just had to re-vote on it, so if there's nothing, somebody make a motion to approve the October 23rd minute. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And then November 16th minutes, did everyone have a chance to take a vote? Any questions, comments?
This is like really silly, but.
Justin?
Yeah.
We'll fix it.
Okay.
Sorry, we'll.
It's under the other business.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Anything else? All right, so do we have a motion to approve the November 16th minutes as revised?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
So that would be 3:00, right? Because we weren't that.
What'd you say?
I have to abstain.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry.
3:01.
Oh, do we need a new second? Oh.
No, you can still second the motion, I believe.
It's actually 3:02, if it hasn't.
Right. Okay, next, our warrants. I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School defense warrants, November 16th, 2023, $709,875.64. December 7th, 2023, $643,435.22. School payroll warrants, November 2nd, 2023, $1,170,934.22. November 16th, 2023, $1,214,533.22. November 30th, 2023, $1,181,100.72. I wish to enter them into public record. All right?
We do not have student. I was going to say tonight, they are actually at the high school, leave the concert.
Oh.
But they have sent along their updates, so.
Okay.
I'll share that with you if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
So as much as I, don't look at the high school student anymore. Time I get one.
Can we also get that corrected because Malia's no longer.
Yeah.
Yes.
If there were any off-minute, I was, I actually had it underlined, so if we can get that.
Yep.
Moving forward.
Yes. Okay, so it says, this is from the Yale School. At the Yale, we have had Winter Fest of Spirit Days this past week and next week. The participation has been phenomenal, from flannel day to crazy sock to college routine jersey day, we have so many showing their spirit. Next week, we will have Decades Concert Band T-shirt and Ugly Sweater Days, to name a few, and we know our Yellians will be decked out in all, in their fair. Next week, our HAPO will again host our holiday bingo games on Thursday with Mr. Gaten calling out the numbers. There will be two winners from each class for each bingo game we play. The prizes are incredible, such a fun event to help kick off the holidays. Norton High School National Honor, English Honors Society students will be coming over to read to the students at the Yale School. This yearly tradition is always so fun to see high school celebrity guest readers read to their classes, similar to Read Across America Day in March. This is so sensational for our big kids to connect with the little Yale students from down the street. Then on Friday during our half-day, we have the annual Students vs. Staff Volleyball Game. We have students from every homeroom participate in the games, one for fourth and one for fifth, with the whole grade spectating during the game. The faculty and staff usually give it all their all in a highly competitive and enjoyable activity. From Norton High School, over the past couple of weeks, we have been visited by a few high-ranking military officers, Lieutenant General Jonathan Braga and Colonel Michael Wagner, an alumnus of Norton High School. Both officers were able to meet with students and share some things about their experiences in the military. As part of the buildup to the brave, teachers have been doing themed dress-up days, such as Slipper Day and Channel Your Flannel Day. Student Council has also been helping to make the school feel festive by decorating teacher doors with wrapping paper and holiday scenes. Tonight, the Norton Chorus and Band are putting on a holiday concert. There will also be a coffee house on Thursday, December 21st. And from Norton Middle School, Norton Middle School winter sports are underway in both girls' and boys' basketball, as well as our Norton Middle School wrestling teams have been practicing and playing games. All teams are looking forward to a successful season. The Norton Middle School concert took place last evening, and both the band and chorus performed several excellent pieces under the direction of Dr. Bianca and Ms. McCollum. Norton also placed, played host to representatives from the Andover Public School yesterday. Andover educators came to Norton Middle School to learn about how our school is run and what goes into making our school an now spotlight school. They came away very impressed by our students, staff, culture, and infrastructure as a whole. Lastly, Festivus has come to Norton Middle School. Next week, Norton Middle School will be celebrating a modified version of Festivus with fun activities decorating in various dress-down days in the run-up to our holiday break. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have announcement of Class of 2024 Adams Scholarship recipients.
That's Need as well. So a few weeks ago, Dr. Donelman and I had the opportunity to honor 47 of our seniors with the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship is a merit-based program that provides a credit toward tuition for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at a Massachusetts State College or university. For this scholarship, merit is based on the student scores on the 10th grade MCAS test. Students must get a score advanced in the Advanced category on one of their three high school assessments, either in ELA, math, or science, and then they have to score at least in the Proficient or Advanced category in the other assessments. And they also have to have a combined MCAS score that ranks in the top 25% of our school district. So we were really excited to see 47 of our students be honored with these awards. We always remind our students that just because you're not sure what your plan is for next year, hang on to the letter, because if you decide to transfer, it is still eligible. And also, there are schools and universities out there that will take the letter from one of our Massachusetts State Colleges and Universities and give you a credit at their institution as well. So to keep that in mind, you have the full list of students there. A lot of familiar names on that list, I'm sure, for all of you, so congratulations to them.
Does, does the state ever release how, how much of this is actually used by the students?
Not that I'm aware of, because that's, that's a great question.
I mean, my, I think it's great that the students, but my concern is it's, it's a little bit unbalanced, because if they're, you know, leaders in their grade educationally, they may not be going to a state school, so that's why I was just kind of seeing like.
And it really depends on the individual student and the individual family and what their goals are after college. We've had a number of students that started somewhere else and then ended up transferring back closer home to one of our local state colleges or universities.
And how long is it before, did you say, just a year?
For all four, I mean, you could, anytime.
Eight semesters.
So if, so if you take a gap year, it's still good for you when you, when you decide to come back, absolutely. So eight semesters with tuition, piece only.
So are all these students in 11th grade right now?
Those are our current senior class.
Current senior class.
Yeah.
This is obviously based on their MCAS course. It's kind of great.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, so it's, you know, a little ways out, but it's, we give it to them when they're in this process, starting to think about the colleges. The letters come directly from the Department of Education. They're signed by the commissioner, so it's a nice little opportunity for them.
Is there anything, again, just kind of statewide, like how we match up against like other districts, or is it just district?
It's just district by district, but I can see if there's other data out there that we could potentially share with you.
No, I'd just be curious to see how we're performing versus like, say, like one of our sister schools or comparable schools, just to see.
And it's, one of the things, it's like, you know, the top 25%, right?
So based on enrollment, based on the number of seniors that are in your class, it will
vary.
Yeah.
You know, Brockton High School, I'm sure, has many more students than we do, or, you know, another urban, so would just be based on enrollment as well.
It's more curiosity, it's not that.
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
Anything else? All right, congratulations to those students, that's awesome. All right, moving along, we have Norton High School items. Dr. Donelman?
Actually, the first one is Dr. Rico's here, I was going to say it's by her as well. She's here, it's her new course. So the first item on there is the approval of a new course. So annually, we kind of go through a process of applying for new courses in our program studies. Really, it begins with a teacher doing some research on their own, developing a course that really fits in line with some of our priorities. They create a proposal, it goes to our academic coordinator group to review it, see that it would align with our priorities, then it goes to Site Council for approval, and then finally a teacher to be added to the program studies. And so this one, we have one course this year that is new, Public Principles of Human Disease, and the person who proposes it is ready, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rico to talk a little bit about it.
So I was introduced to this course or the idea of it at a professional development that I went to at Bridgewater a few years ago, and this course was actually developed by the Tufts University Center for Science Education. And the goal of it is to promote understanding of major diseases that have an impact on the world, and also just to increase like general understanding about health and give students the tools that they need in the future to make educated and informed decisions about their own health, like journey and things that they're exposed to. So it's centered around four main kind of units that you go into, infectious disease, neurological disease, metabolic disease, like diabetes and obesity, and then cancer. So for each unit, instead of just being traditional, like you learn information, you take a test, they're more project-based and they're more hands-on. So there's a lot of lab activities, like simulations, and every unit is centered on like patient-based studies, where students are trying to figure out like what's wrong with the patient and doing research and applying what they're learning in class to these different patient situations, which is more realistic to what students who eventually go into health sciences will be doing if they're going into like nursing or other medical type situations. So the goal of it is to kind of open it up to students who are in their junior or senior year, so these would be students that already completed biology and one of the physical sciences, so it would be more elective, and probably towards students who are more interested in going towards either health sciences or like some biological sciences-type fields. Eventually, we're kind of looking into maybe trying to get a health science pathway in the school as well, so it would be a great class for that as well, for students who are going into the health sciences and want to go into like the state pathways for that.
Yes, Dr. Rico said we recently gained the designation from the Department of Education for our Advanced Manufacturing Pathway, which really the focus of there is on giving students expertise in the classroom with technical courses, which this would be at Norton High School for our Health Sciences Pathway in the future, and then they can use that, that expertise today again in the classroom and a workplace environment where they have a capstone project or an internship at the end of their years at Norton High School, and again, giving them the skills that would allow them to jump right into a career if they needed to, or if they were interested in going to college and furthering their education and going back to that field with greater degrees, that would be good as well.
That's great, as a retired physical therapist, I love seeing classes like this because this could be kind of the spark that, that shows a student that there's other things out there in health sciences, so I think this is, you know, this is a really great class to offer.
Yeah, there's also kind of an SEL component as well tied into the unit, so for example, the unit about metabolic diseases has students thinking about exercise and healthy diet. The neurological unit has information about like stress and anxiety and getting adequate sleep and things like that, substance abuse disorders, so it's things that typically students are able to relate to and things that they're, if they're not encountering now, they're going to be probably encountering. now, they're gonna be probably encountering at some point in their life, and giving them the tools that they need to help manage those things.
That's great. Anybody have anything else, questions or comments?
So, the curriculum map has every unit, like eight to 10 weeks. Is the plan to offer, say infectious diseases and cancer in one semester and then the other two in the spring?
You could potentially do that, like we could have it be Human Disease One, Human Disease Two, and you could kind of take either, because they could definitely be taught in any sequence. So, that might, probably that actually might be better for scheduling as a half-year course instead of a full-year course.
And we have in recent years really sought to have courses that can either be taken in sequence as a full-year course or divided into semester ones simply for that flexibility and so students can take more than one if they want to fit what they can in their schedule and sort of prioritize.
Yeah, I'm thinking too, you might have a few more interested in cancer, well, less about, you know, whatever that like, you know, if it is kind of scheduled that way on already in the curriculum, then it makes sense. I guess, and I think I asked at a class, how do we know students are interested in this, something that they want to do, something that we're gonna, you know, put out there and then actually get students to sign up for and take the class?
Yeah, I can say it's anecdotal, like we don't have survey data or anything for it, but just from teaching, I teach anatomy and physiology, I teach bio and apibio. When we talk about diseases or when we get into the part where we're doing it, that's when the kids are like the most interested, because it lights a spark, like everybody knows somebody who's been sick or everybody's been sick, but we just don't have the time to like be able to really delve into it too much. So, it seems like the interest is there. I guess we would have to run it and see how many can sign up for it.
I would also say, there are times that we do sort of survey students and look for interest, this wasn't one of those, you guys, within a department, they'll do that to see what kind of courses they would. For instance, last year, I think the true crime elective that they offered was essentially based on what in a survey situation. We also, this is pretty exciting to me, because when you look at our course data and course selection data, we have a huge number of students taking multiple science classes. Science seems to be one of the departments that students really want to double up on, triple up on as juniors and seniors, so it seems like there's always a desire for more more science, especially things that are really applicable either to a career or to college.
So, speaking a little bit, piggybacking on Nick's point, when we look at the catalog, how often do we look at what we might want to remove from it? Because I know like we see year over year adding classes, adding classes, mostly electives for the most part, but do we ever look at our catalog and say, you know, we might have the data of who has taken this, like do we take things out and how does that process work? Like, is that the department heads, is that the administration? I just don't want to have this big, you know, influx of new classes that have like five kids in this one and five kids in this one, because, you know, we know space is limited at the high schools, so do we ever look at that as a whole and say, we should maybe not offer this one? Like, I know we, the pathways are a little different, because we have to have certain classes, but, you know, do we look at our electives year over year, or how does that process work?
We do, so basically, the way that works at the high school is students have opened their feet or go where they'd like to go, and we look at our course data or request data at the beginning of the scheduling process and decide which of those electives are going to run. Sometimes if there are years where no, one of the particular electives won't run year after year, we might remove it from the course catalog. The other part of it is that we think, and we haven't done a ton of it lately, but thinking strategically about sort of what electives are offered from year to year, so sometimes we get request data that shows that there are actually two different courses that might have, you know, like eight to 10 students who are in it, but if we offered, say, one of those courses one year, all, you know, 16 to 20 of them might want to take it that year, and then we offer the other one the next year, we would have that sort of amount of students wanting to take that. So, that's sort of how we go about it. We try to leave pretty much everything in the catalog, because we don't necessarily know from year to year whether students are going to want to take that course, or there might be sort of a groundswell of students who really wanted to see it in the course catalog, a teacher talks it up when they're doing the recommendations or two student selections, and students kind of go to that. So, we don't often take them out, only if they haven't run for several years, do we? And they still stay in our electronic catalog, we need to keep that as a record just for student transcripts and all those kinds of things. So, once a course is in there, it is pretty well ensconced, but it might not run from year to year, and that's one of the things that's sort of said right in front of the program studies too, is we offer these courses, depending on interest, we run the ones that students want to take.
I think my last questions aren't really questions, more of a statement, I think, that you guys can make. We can obviously see it, but obviously, this is kind of a high-level education, if you will, Dr. Rico, some high-level, you know, health-based stuff. I know we have it, but what is it, you know, from the public standpoint, teacher, other teacher standpoint? Who's teaching your class? Who's certified to teach your class? And then, you know, kind of what does that all shake up to do?
Yeah, I proposed it, because I was interested in teaching it. The standards that it covers are the biology standards, a lot of them, so anyone certified in biology could teach it. My background, I have a PhD in immunology, so I did research on all this stuff, so like, I don't want to toot my own horn, but like...
You're very qualified. You're very qualified to teach this course, yes.
But I think anyone in the department who's certified in biology could do it.
Good. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. So, if there's no more discussion, do we have a motion to approve the new course of Principles of Human Disease at high school?
Some of it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Good luck and thank you.
Thank you, it's great.
And so, the second item from the high school is coming back to the high school calendar and asking the school committee for permission to have early release days around our mid-year assessment schedule, so that would be the January 24th and 25th that we can predict, and then in June, right now, would be the 10th and 11th, with the 12th is the final day there as well. And the purpose of these is really just to give students and teachers the time to prepare for assessments, to do pretty large-scale assessments that are going to sort of measure the skills over the course of the first half of the year and the second half of the year, but then have the opportunity to reflect upon them. Really, what our goal here is, is to align those assessments with all of our school and district priorities, and so what I tried to do this year in the memo is sort of go through our school approval plan and show where these assessments would be tied in. In particular, we're really looking for these to play a role in our database decision-making, so giving us the data that we need in order to measure student success, measure their mastery on certain skills, and then also analyze that data to provide curriculum updates or curriculum adjustments based on how students score, as well as going through individual students and looking at their performance in order to try to give them interventions that they need as part of our IMTSS, or the Integrated Multitierred System of Support that we have. And then the other part of it is that NIESC looks for us to implement a way of measuring our portion of graduate standards, and this is something that we've been working on for a few years here of embedding the portion of a graduate within our assessments, so that students are able to show that they have mastered some of those characteristics or some of those standards, and then that'll give us the opportunity through analysis in order to report them as well. One of the movements that we've really seen over the past couple of years, they've moved towards portfolios and students sort of taking and reflecting upon their work. There are a few departments that already have in place portfolios as final assessments, and then their mid-year assessments are actually building towards that. Some good examples of that are our Language Department, really focused on proficiency when it comes to reading, speaking, listening, all of it, writing, all of those standards are sort of part of their mid-year assessment, and then that's something that students can reflect upon and actually use in their end-of-year portfolio. Eventually, where we'd like to get to this, as was outlined in the school approval plan, is really to try to get a school-wide portfolio that shows not only students' mastery of academic skills, but also the portion of graduate skills, and can give you what I've implemented in our LOB, the MICA, sort of a resume slash sort of cover letter, maybe a 15-second elevator pitch of the skills that they can provide to an employer as well, to really allow students to tell a story beyond the transcript. So, your transcript would just have your grades, but you have the ability to demonstrate all the things that you know and are able to do at the end of your career. So, this is something that we're trying to look at as a stepping stone toward that. And if you flip to the third page there, I just listed some of the examples of assessments that we give. You know, obviously, I've moved away from trying to call them exams, because as you'll see, like many of them aren't exams, many of them are presentations of projects, many of them are working on portfolios, many of them are authentic assessments, so English and history, for instance, are really based on skills of writing, where they might do two or three writing prompts, where they get heavily prepared for them and can come in and really demonstrate within a finite amount of time where they are. Obviously, we provide combinations for that as well. And then, we try to sort of put parameters around them, keeping in mind certainly the sort of social-emotional toll that high-stakes testing can sometimes take, or high-stakes assessments can sometimes take. So, we really tried in the past to limit its impact on grades, so previously, about five years ago, it was 10% of your final grade was your mid-year, 10% was your final. We eliminated those as standalone categories and embedded them within the quarter grades, and that was something that we took quite a bit of data over the 21, 22 school year. They were basically worth about half of what they had been previously and also embedded within that quarter. And so, all of those things were sort of done as ways to mitigate some of the concerns that student had about how significant the acceptment was. And then really, what we're looking to do is get to a point where we'll have students be able to present their learning in an authentic way and show the mastery that they've attained over the course of the year and over the course of their careers. And really, the time that we need for this, and also obviously, students who take an assessment or two assessments in a day, really appreciate having spoken to them to have the time where they can go home, prepare for the next days, take a rest, then go to athletic practice, their after-school activities or whatever it might be, and then move forward. So, the half-days are really helpful to us for our teachers and for our students.
So, I was kind of taken a little bit back with this, because I know we had quite a lengthy discussion, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, regarding assessments and calling what they are and what they, and I know there's a member not here, including myself, that we weren't in favor of the 100-question Scantron sheet, so I guess my question with this is, is there discretion by department with assessments they can offer? Like, for example, I was talking to my high school or my college freshman, and we were talking about how like, there's not much you can do, and no offense if they hear the math department, there's not much you can do creatively with math, so you really would probably have to offer an assessment exam versus, you know, something in the civics, you know, coursework where you could have a project. So, I guess my question is, how do we have a standard assessment by department? Like, how can we measure that so we're, you know, our NIESC partners and whoever that we're getting everything correctly assessed by grade?
Yeah, so I mean, that is really the job of the department, so I mean, as far as when they look at the state standards, they look at what they see, you know, through their expertise, what are the most important things out of those state standards, sometimes we talk about them as power standards, that are the things that they really want their students to know when they leave high school or leave that year, or things that are transferable to the next grade level, and those are the things that are emphasized within the assessments, and then they sort of decide upon the common assessments within a course, what that assessment will entail, what the sort of grading practices or rubric that describes sort of what proficient would look like or exceeding expectations would look like. And that's what we tend to spend a lot of time doing, is arriving at the assessment, looking at student data, kind of asking questions about did this assess what we wanted it to, what we needed it to do, looking at the results and seeing where students did as far as in one course versus another. That might lead to discussions about how certain teachers instructed particular skills, or it might lead to how they have really rolled out those particular skills, but that's what the time is really all about, we call it calibrating, and making sure that our assessments are doing what we want them to do with state standards, making sure that they're aligning with what the department's priorities are and allows them to move to the next levels. So, that's really what they do, why we need some of the time, we do it in common planning time right now, we do it through planning time, where they're really looking at assessments and curriculum materials to make sure that they're aligned to that way, and that's really common through courses. And they have to be common, or else then the data between the two don't really mean much. They have, they need to have some sort of assessment that's going to give them that information across the course.
If I just could add something to Ethan, if you mind. I think when we started our IMTSS, like refresh and really looking at the data that we were collecting, we saw that we had this opportunity with these common assessments in certain departments to really use it as another data point in the year to say, okay, this is a common assessment that all Algebra I students are taking, that all, you know, English IX students are taking, and where are our students strong as a whole? Where can we offer opportunities for intervention that's kind of more timely, instead of you failed at the end of the year? And how can we look at our curriculum and our, the way that we're teaching, the resources that we have, and really be able to tweak the experience to make it valuable for all of our learners? You know, as Dr. Dolman mentioned, previously, the mid-year and the final had such a huge, huge impact on the overall scores and grades for our students. The high school has done a really great job in stepping away from that and, you know, tweaking their practice to make sure that while we're still assessing students, it's not as much of a high risk for them, and it's also giving teachers the opportunity to have conversations and say, okay, you know, I have a few kids that are really struggling with this particular concept, you know, how could we look at this a little bit differently as a department? Okay, was it just my class, or was it the whole department that we had a difficult time with this particular area? So, it really brings back that collaborative conversation, conversations and PLCs. I think the IMTSS process has given us like a refreshed look at some of these assessments and saying, okay, we have them, how can we use them in a way that's more beneficial for everyone that's involved?
I just have a couple thoughts and questions. Do other, like, obviously, I've been out of high school for a while and college, so just out of curiosity, do other towns do this? Like, have like kind of a combination of like some classes will do your typical multiple choice, you know, and then some will do a portfolio, or is that like a common thing across the state, I guess?
So, as far as the actual makeup of the assessments, I don't have great data on that, or I don't have great data, period, but I had to have some data on like how many people are still doing assessments in a similar fashion where they adjust their schedule and have those?
Yeah.
Just through the survey of a principal job like group that I had, over 70% of them still do that, they still have sort of the schedule the way that it is. There is definitely a move, partnered partially by NIESC, but also there's other agencies that work in standards-based grading, there's an organization called the Mastery Transcript Consortium, which a few area schools such as NIMCO and Holliston have embraced, and really what that does is focus on this idea of a portfolio and actually turn that into the school's transcript, that is something that is being basically accepted by colleges as a demonstration of mastery as well. So, basically, a lot of schools are working on this, just like we are, trying to figure out the best way to tell the story of their student success and mastery at high school. And as you pointed out, Dan, like different departments and different subject matter lend themselves to portfolio better than others, and where sometimes when you're talking about, particularly with math, a series of discrete skills, there is very little way to assess that necessarily, other than going through those discrete skills, much like an MCAS, or some of the STAR data that we use as well, that looks at those individual skills in a pretty multiple-choice-based test, or being able to show your working short answers as well. So, to answer your question, like people are kind of all over the map, we're all part of the ask, so we're kind of working towards portion of graduate, working towards ways to demonstrate that, but schools are still very much sort of transitioning and figuring out what the best way forward is.
Do we have any data as far as like, and I sort of mentioned this before, but like, for students who have graduated, do we ask, like, do you feel like, for those that either went to work or went to college, like, how do you feel you are prepared for a college assessment or maybe a college project, presentation, a portfolio? Like, do we have any information in that respect as far as like past students or?
Only anecdotally? So, one of the issues just with collecting data from students afterwards is they lose their Norton High School account, they never check it again, so as far as like tracking them down, oftentimes, we do that through social media, and National Honor Studies for a few years bring students back, and we're trying to get that going again, so you'd have a group of, you know, 15 to 20 students who would come back, who have different types of majors and are able to tell you sort of how they were, you know, felt they were prepared based on their experience in Norton High School, give tips about laundry, but also tips about preparing for assessments, final projects, things like that, so it's kind of a mixed bag there.
But we don't send a student survey to all of our graduates?
Eric Grasso, I live on Oak Street and been teaching at the high school for 19 years, and I can speak to the rigor as far as our tests are preparing people. So, for my students that have graduated and gone on to college, the ones, the one commonality for students who don't succeed in college or just don't persevere through, it's their avoidance of rigorous tests. So, when they would get to a test, a big test, they would either not show up that day, and then we'd have to work on getting them to take the test, and we'd make extra time, come after school, use LOB, but in general, when that happens, you start to see that pattern. Those are the students who do not excel under the pressure of taking a test later on. So, I would say that the rigor itself of having an exam is very important, so we should definitely, I would recommend keeping it, but I also see the value in having that time for projects as well, and also just the idea of standards-based, like having that new, we are still learning to adopt, adapt our tests to the new standards of graduate, and if we lose that time, we are now going to be playing catch-up to try to meet that standard when NIESC comes. We don't want to lose our accreditation. My son is in third grade and my daughter's in first, and I really don't want our school to not be a highly accredited school when they get to high school, because I want to teach them and I want them to have a great experience and a great, and that their diploma to mean something. But yeah, I can just say from my experience, there is still some value in it, but I will say this, as far as math goes, so like math has this one extra... But I will say this, as far as math goes, so like math has this one extra thing, like we get it as a math teachers here. So there are a lot of math teachers here. And we all use the DESE website at the, right around September every year, they give out the results from last year's MCAS. Question by question and standard by standard. So we know, like I work with Kara, we know we're going to focus more on circles. Just in general, because circles, chapter five in the book is circles. And we know now that four questions on the MCAS were on circles. And we all score every single question. We had less than fifty percent of the students get it right. So we get to do that during LLB. We're already changing our curriculum, the map, the framework. Like we're now going to try to attack that section. So we know that that section gets added before we take the MCAS. So that our standards in our school now gets boosted up when our scores go up. So I do think there's some value there.
I think this has been something that we've talked about for a very long time. I mean, this has been a work in progress. I mean, Ethan, you said five years. I mean, it's hard to believe that we've been doing this for that long. But I think some of my concerns in the beginning of this were that the exams, when we were calling them exams, were so, the grades really did affect final grades. I think that was some of our biggest issues that we had with it. And with that said, I mean, looking at where it's at now, I think is you guys have all done an amazing job of really kind of relooking at things and seeing how, you know, things relate to students and, you know, how they can achieve. And I think that part of like what you were just saying, Eric, is that it's important for our students to understand how to be assessed. Because it's a life skill, right? You're going to go to a job and you're going to be assessed on how you do that job. And if we as parents and educators aren't teaching our kids, because it may be hard, then I think we're doing a huge disservice. And I think that finding the balance of, you know, not making a test so important that, you know, that defines who a student is. But having some area, and I think that's what Norton has done very well. And is again, you know, once again, we've talked about this for years, that we're a leading community. I think that, you know, all of you have put the time and effort into making it something that, you know, I at this point can fully support. Because I think it is important for our students to learn how to be assessed. That's life.
And it's not perfect. And, you know, Dr. Dolman and the high school team have done an incredible job of reflecting on it every single year. Every time they do midterms, every time they do the end of the year assessments, they look at the data, they look at the assessment. They talk about how it showed what the students know and if it was a valuable assessment. So kudos to the whole high school for just really doing a great job of being willing to have difficult conversations. And to, you know, try things that might feel outside of our comfort zone, but, you know, persevere and finding a way to get there as a team. So nice job.
Yeah, I think at times it was a little contentious, you know, with some feedback that we had. And, you know, I do appreciate everybody's time and effort that you have put in to, you know, benefit our students, honestly. But from where we were at the start of this to where we are now, I mean, I'm much happier and much more comfortable with where we're at for our students.
Yeah, I think historically that was the biggest concern was the weight that this bore.
It was.
You know, I mean, I know there's some sort of exemption status for the high performers in classes, I believe.
For seniors.
For seniors. So I mean, you know, especially as a senior, like you're checked out by the time finals are, I mean, especially finals. So I mean, but you think of it as a senior, the weight of your final assessment could make or break you. You know, not, and back then, you know, I'm going back a lot longer than Justine, no offense. You know, SEL wasn't thought of when I was in high school. It wasn't even a thing if I'm that old. So I mean, now we're worried about social emotional learning and this is the epitome of social emotional issues is these assessment stress like. So I mean, and Sherry mentioned this, you know, there's no, you know, grand scheme of how this has to look for every student. So I, you know, kudos to the high school and staff to make an effort to get us there. That we'll find some happy balance of what's going to work for all of our students.
Yeah, I think it's important for our students to know too that during stressful situations, they have support in our schools, right? Because life is full of stress. The only you get, I mean, that's all there is. And I think that kids nowadays, you know, they're so used to these stupid things that everything is instant gratification. And when something doesn't go their way, they don't know how to process that. They don't know what to do. So I think having a little bit of stress is not a bad thing, you know, especially when it's in an environment where we have people that maybe not love them, but like them a lot. And willing to, you know, yeah, care about them, willing to help them. So yeah.
And as I've said multiple times this year, SEL doesn't mean that we don't have high academic expectations for our students.
Absolutely, right. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy with this. Thank you again. Anybody else have any questions or comments or?
What are we voting on?
So actually, this is a calendar.
Uh, this is the calendar.
This is a calendar. But this has been, this has been a discussion for a long time.
I think just from a calendar standpoint, I think we just need to get this on our full academic calendar.
Agreed.
Stop doing these in December. One, I'm sure it's not easy for the teachers. Two, it's definitely cannot be easy on the families that all of a sudden we're throwing in half days in less than a month for mid-year exams.
It's high school.
Yes.
Yeah, but yeah, it is a little different. So most of these kids can go home, yeah, but most of these kids can go home and watch themselves a jerk. But it's still true. I mean, work at a college, we have an academic calendar, you know exactly when final exams are, everyone knows. That's like your go-to bible, if you will. So I think like one, once we're doing our academic calendar for the entire year. Mid-year and final exams need to be on there with an asterisk that says if we have snow or blah, 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 just any waiting center from the center. This may change. However, you know, this is kind of where we're sticking. We know when we're doing mid-term exams. We know when we're doing finals. It should be relatively easy to hit.
We could put, you know, in this, in the academic calendar, like, you know, three days in January will be for final exam or midterm exam. So I mean.
So we'll be bringing you the first draft of the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar at our first meeting in January. We usually do it over two meetings. So you see it, we have a first draft and then we vote on it at the second meeting. So we'll make sure that those are included. I think it's also important to know that the midterm dates, it's actually it's two days for early release. The third day that Friday is actually a district-wide professional development day. So our staff at the high school will probably be engaged in very similar work all three days. Because, you know, so much of our time this year is really devoted to looking at assessments and looking at student data and, you know, for our IMTSS process. So it's really the two days, just so you're aware as well.
So I guess, I mean, midterms probably aren't going to fluctuate at the high school. And this is only really the school that's affected by it. But finals could be because of snow.
Yes.
But we probably, we know roughly what week it's going to be.
Yeah, so we do. We're pretty confident in terms of the weeks that it happens. So we'll put them on and just note that they could potentially, you know, flex a day or two based on.
Correct. Yeah.
We would definitely welcome that. High school would be great. I certainly would say that we would continue to look at them too, though. I mean, that's part of the whole thing is that we do a lot of examination of our assessment. Make sure they're assessing what we want them to do and are the best way to assess those skills too. So we'll keep that up.
And then for the greater good, it's half days for our students. Our teachers are still in correcting exams, preparing for exams. So the public doesn't think our teachers are going to have day for those straight days.
Was it very much worth it?
Very much working.
Okay, anything else? All right. So I guess we need a motion to change the school calendar to reflect mid-year and final exams at the high school.
So.
Did I say it wrong?
Yep.
I did?
You added a lot of words.
Go ahead, Nick. Make the motion. Make the motion. Go ahead. Go ahead. I didn't know the second did they.
I would say motion. For this year, for this year.
Don't.
Motion, motion to approve January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth as half days at Norton High School.
What is there?
About you?
June dates are two.
Well, we don't have June, we don't have June dates on here.
We want to put them on now instead of waiting.
We have to vote on that.
What am I voting on? Am I voting on the tenth or eleventh?
Oh my God, stick with my motion. Does anybody second my motion?
Probably it's the tenth and eleventh depending on snow days. It would be the two days adjacent to the last day of school.
So the two days adjacent to the last day of school.
The motion has written is to change the NHS calendar to two additional half days in January and June. That's the motion.
All right. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Ah, yes. Did you vote?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys. Done with high school, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Discussion on virtual meeting options. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I think it's like an air return, just two different things. So I think there's something coming from.
Hey, Peter, flip that light switch cord right behind your head. Please.
Nope.
Turn it back on. Please. Thanks.
It's annoying.
I think that's, to me, I think that's the heat register up there. On wait list for tomorrow.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, Karen, you're up now.
Hi. So at the last meeting, we were briefly talking about bringing back virtual meetings. And I think we had tabled it because Mr. Schröder was not available. So I provided you with some information, just we have previously done Zoom meetings. I think I will leave it to Dr. O'Neill to speak to the laws and regulations regarding open meeting requirements and public comment and those types of things. But I can tell you that the technology department can do Zoom meetings. We were directed under the previous superintendent to stop doing them. So we can bring those back if that is a desire of the school committee. I laid out quite a few considerations. One being we did get several complaints when we did Zoom meetings about the audio. And that's just because we don't have any microphones. So I did attach just a couple of kind of temporary solutions. They're not that expensive, you know, ranging from five, six hundred dollars up to, you know, twelve, fifteen hundred. And they would be similar to these microphones where we would be able to place them at the table though, so that we would be able to hear. And those would kind of feed back to a computer, which would be running Zoom, which would be me sitting over there. One of the things that I did want to do is really think about what the other town departments are doing. And so they all go to Norton Media Center. And so Jason Benjamin, myself and Paul Droskell did have a conversation about what that would look like. And because it's December, all of the other town, I guess the town departments or they've picked the best days. So Mondays and Fridays would be available starting in January. And then we could look at doing something for next year if you wanted to host your meetings there. Norton Media would take care of everything. If you did choose to do that, they would record the meetings, they would upload the meetings to YouTube and then we would just need to, we wouldn't need to purchase anything in that regard.
So really it would just be, it would be, it would be live?
So the difference between what we would do and what they would do, it's the same thing. They run a Zoom meeting. But there's not necessarily someone monitoring it for like comments. It's not really any different than what we would do here. They just have the setup.
And I believe legally, we don't have to allow any comments from the room.
No, everything has to go to the chair.
So in terms of open meeting law, the way that our board is set up, we have always allowed people to speak on topics that are here. But they have to have permission from the chair before they are able to speak to anything. We're a little bit more casual, I think, than some other boards. Ultimately, I should have just said through the chair, excuse me, chair, like, you know, and ask permission to speak. We're a little bit more casual than that. But ultimately, that's, that's the way that it works. The other thing for us to consider is access for our families that may have specific needs when it comes to viewing and hearing the meetings. As you know, we have a large deaf and hard hearing program here in district. So previously, we used REEDs for ASL interpreters and they were always here at our meetings. That is obviously an additional cost to pay people for their time. And we also provided closed captioning, which again, we paid a skilled person to provide that service for us. The way that the rights are actually set up is that we are required to provide access and with advanced notice. So if we decided that we were going to livestream, though, I think it would be important for us as a committee through my office to share information with not just our families, but also the community at large. To share that, you know, our video, our meetings are now able to be watched live. Please know that if you have a specific accommodation that you would like to have in order to be able to watch the meeting, please reach out to Mrs. Anderson and that way we could schedule things ahead of time and provide the appropriate accommodations.
So we wouldn't essentially offer ASL principles request?
And we would do a buyer request.
So I guess my question with this, like when we had the joint meeting, I noticed there was a monitor over here. I believe the select board had as, it was concurrent. So it's basically just a live Zoom. It's a livestream Zoom meeting.
Yes.
But now I guess taking, the select board doesn't allow comments from Zoom.
I don't know that they really have anyone going through and facilitating it. I don't want to speak for them and what their process is. Maybe Mike is watching it as things are coming in. We've all sat on those virtual FinCom meetings and there's really not a lot of public participation there.
Yeah, I mean, going back to when we were on Zoom, it was, it was challenging. I mean, I know like before we finally all met again in person, you know, like those time, you know, where I might be remote because I was sacred to Naz or Sherry, whoever it was. And it was super challenging to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody else in the room. So that was my first concern. And, you know, when I, when I read the options, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a fan of spending a ton of money to do this. I don't know what the benefit is. Honestly, I don't know. I mean, I don't happen to watch. Occasionally I would re-watch a select board meeting, you know, after, a day or two after or something like that. If someone's like, oh, did you see this topic? Or so I don't, I don't personally see a benefit, but I'm not, you know, I'm not immune to hearing about it. But, you know, I just, it was so challenging when we could be remote and not in person. And then going back when we were fully remote, I mean, how many times are you like, you know, oh, we got a comment, oh, we got a comment. And that was challenging because, you know, it seemed like we had more comments because we had to be remote than we've ever had in person. I mean, we go meeting to meeting with two or three people in the audience.
I wonder if people, you know, were talking about wanting it to be an option because they thought that they would be able to communicate with us like they did during COVID years. You know, they may, they may be thinking that we're going back to what we did before where that's not really what it's going to be. It's going to be them sitting and listening to us. And I agree, Zoom is, it's difficult. You know, I would personally rather just watch the YouTube after the fact because even if you're sitting at home watching a Zoom, would you even get in your car and come down here because you have something to say? Like, I don't know. I, I wanted to go through the exercise and that's why we asked you to do it because we really wanted to see the cost, right? And I know other boards don't have to, you know, worry about closed captioning and all of that stuff, but it is an added expense for us.
But ironically, they do.
Well, in theory, they should.
Oh, they should.
Legally, they should be worrying about that. If they have a community member that would like to participate virtually, they are legally required to provide that access.
Yeah.
So I think because we have such a large population through REEDs, that it's, I think it's something that we're more aware of.
Yeah.
But those are the regulations.
Do you reach out to families now that they, if they wanted to attend one of our meetings that we would accommodate? Do they know up to?
No, we really, we don't. And we certainly can.
Well, they'd have to request.
Yeah, they would just have to share.
They may not even, they may not even think that they can request is what I'm saying. So it may be, it may be just worth kind of putting something out there because you don't want to ever make somebody feel excluded.
Right.
They would of course always be welcome and we would accommodate, but I think they need to know that.
I think as Dr. Nimitz, we're very sensitive to those needs where, because it's part of our makeup.
Yeah, every day.
Whereas some other departments may not.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, sitting on some of those virtual meetings with other departments, they're not, it's quality issues. It's, you know, you can watch if someone has to make a comment, all of a sudden the microphone goes off and you have fourteen people talking at once.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, we don't have that here. I mean, I would be in favor of like a livestream option. And then just, you know, maybe just, I don't want to say non-entertaining from the audience, but, you know, I wouldn't mind a livestream option. But I, I think we can't go back to, you know, a couple of people on, you know, I have a comment, I have a question, I have this, I have that. You know, monitoring it. Yeah. And I don't think, you know, it's, it's hard for us to, to test like what quality is going to be. Because that's the other part of this open meeting law as it's written now. If you have technical difficulties and you're in a hybrid meeting, you have to cancel your meeting. So if the Zoom doesn't work, the whole meeting has to be canceled. So if the Zoom doesn't work, the whole meeting has to be canceled if it's published as a Zoom meeting in a, in a hybrid option. So we can be all, we, all the five of us can be here, we have no issues at all. But if there's a problem with that Zoom, you have to adjourn your meeting right away. You cannot hold that meeting.
Agreed.
A hundred percent.
Yes, because if it's advertised that people can access the meeting virtually, and they are not able to, you're denying, you're, you're violating open meeting law.
So you remember, Nick, like, I think it was
We had to cancel once last year.
Last year's meeting, joint meeting at the library, they couldn't get it going when, I believe, Train was presenting, and we had to delay the start of the meeting by about 10 minutes.
Yes, absolutely.
But we all had to call and say, you know, call the meeting to order the adjournment. But if your technical difficulties fail, then you can't hold your meeting if it's offered as a hybrid option. And I don't, I don't
But I don't know if this would be, I guess my thing is, what I'm looking at here is, I don't know if this would be considered a hybrid meeting. Wouldn't it just be a livestream?
If you're offering a Zoom link, it's considered hybrid under open meeting. I believe it's how
I mean, I'm happy to reach out to legal counsel and ask him a little bit more about the nuances of that. Because, you know, I guess we're upfront in saying, you know, we are offering a livestream of our meeting. Please note that public participation is, is not available through a virtual format. And that if you would like to be part of our meeting, or have a, have something that you want, an agenda item that you would like to comment on, that you must be present. I mean, I can ask and find out.
Yeah, I'm just like
It's, it's a kind of a fine line.
Picture, I mean, we were growing up, if you know, like, you watched on Norton Cable. If Norton Cable
Was it live?
Yes.
Yeah, it was live.
And if Norton Cable went out, they still did their meeting.
Yeah.
So like, I would assume there's got to be something in there that protects you in a livestream situation.
You weren't commenting.
What's that?
Unless you phoned in.
Unless you were, like, you know, you don't want to
Remember those days?
You get a phone ring, phone out.
Dial.
The topic was closed. It was ready to save the bomb.
So I think, and I appreciate you guys staying on this, my thing would be more of a livestream than a Zoom. I'm not a person who's going to have someone sitting behind a computer fielding questions and that nonsense. If you, if it is important for you to comment on a situation, bring it to the table and come sit in front of us and talk to us. I think going online with that would be a nightmare for us. I don't think we have the ability to do it. To Karen's point, you know, the technology here, being able to hear everybody, then trying to get a Zoom on, listen to someone, mute it, I'm not, that's going to be a nightmare. I don't think that's, I wasn't going down that road. I was more looking at it from a, hey, you know, just like the select board does, hey, it's a livestream, if you want to watch it live, you can watch it live. You know, and just give that option.
Yeah.
And I think the benefit is if someone really is sitting at soccer practice, or hey, you know, I saw some topic on there, I don't want to comment on it, I want to listen to what they're saying, they can listen right there in there, you know, there's no delay. I mean, just for example, I know it's probably not anyone's, in the room's fault here, but like, our last meeting isn't on our website yet. It's on Norton Media's YouTube, you know, so like, I obviously re-watched it because I wasn't here. You know, but I watched all of those not on our school committee website. So like, that's the delay of you looking at, hey, there's, you know, three weeks now that our last meeting hasn't been up. You know, so I think like that's ultimately, hey, it's a livestream. Hey, this is, you know, this is where you can find the newest updated link. This is what we're doing. It just helps in this whole communication transparency process.
And I think it's important for us also to note and probably say publicly is that we used to have a coordinator of media, that her responsibility was all of those things in terms of getting all of those things out and on our website so that people can access them. And unfortunately, when we have budget cuts, there are, there are ramifications to those decisions that we make. And a lot, like, our Norton social media really isn't up and running this year because it's, it, Karina, you know, we're like, oh my gosh, I really miss Karina. Because she was so instrumental. I think she did so much more than anyone realized, just in terms of our outward facing to the community, our website, all of those things. Karen and her team do an incredible job and have picked up a huge amount of slack from what Karina, the things that Karina used to do. But again, like, you know, we all have our other, our, our own roles to put in, to do as well.
I'm interested in kind of like the Norton Media component of it, because then it doesn't cost us anything. But what I would miss, though, is like the, the opening of the schools, like being at each school, because that's when I would, you know, I haven't seen JCS in how many years now? So I would go and be able to see that, so
I mean, Norton Media, it sounds like a great idea, but that is not something that, we can't be moving our meeting times to Mondays and Fridays and move it now. So my suggestion here would be, do the best we can with what we got without spending a dime, because that's what we got. It is what it is. Go for $0. Turn it over to you and give us the best setup you can possibly do. We will try to livestream it as best as we possibly can. And then I think the other option here is, well, not the other option, but looking towards a future. Once this community center is done, I think then we will be able to hopefully take advantage of saying, Thursday, Texas, 6:00 PM, Norton School Committee is meeting in the community room, and it will be hopefully our latest and greatest technology that our tax office has.
I trust you.
Oh my gosh, it's up to speech for me.
It is, Peter. So, I was just going to ask.
Please go ahead, Karen.
So we can plan for the next meeting, and I'll work with Pam to get the, it will have to be Zoom. Like, we can't do a livestream via like YouTube or something. I'd love to be able to do that, we just don't have the equipment to do that. But we can set something up so it's a webinar, so that would just be viewable by the community, and here's the link that they can view it. And we do have the equipment that we have during
And prior to, I will connect with legal, double check that that's okay, that we can actually do it that way, and obviously reach out and let the committee know. And if we are publishing the January 14th or 11th, whatever the date is, as a livestream, then our community will be able to join us as well.
Yeah, I just, the only thing I worry about is the, is the microphone issue, because I know it was very, very difficult to hear last time. And so people might get excited and then turn it on and realize you can't hear us at all. But I just think with the budget the way that we have and our decisions that we're going to have to make again this year, I just can't see spending money on microphones, so that some people may
Correct.
Agreed.
You know, I just can't see spending money on it, but
And if it's something we want to, I mean, we can look to put it in the budget for next year, you know.
Or we can look to go to Community Center or Norton Media, you know, next year.
Absolutely.
For a different set. Through this year.
Jason did say that more likely than not, you could put in for your regular time for the next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I think too, if it's easy enough, because I don't want to make sure you have to be sitting here for every meeting. If it's simply turning into Zoom, I think everybody in the room would be able to kind of help out in that regard too, that like, we don't need an extra body here for no reason.
Yeah, and Karen's incredible, and she's always here for us when we need her. She lives in Rochester, which is not right around the corner.
So if it's a simple, hey, turn the computer on, hit the Zoom link, you know.
Oh, believe me, what we call it.
We FaceTime her.
On Face, and it's like, show me what's across.
Pam can do it.
Karen, is that something you can coordinate from home as well? Like, could you
The only thing is, we just have to set up the Zoom room here. And depending upon if you want to allow the option for committee members or those who are participating in the meeting, like, we would connect it to the, the board. So that's it. I mean, it's just that big kind of bar on the tripod connected to the board so that you see it. And I just sat over there so that I would listen to the audio.
And currently, our, we do allow for members to join us virtually if needed, for, for, for you as school committee members.
For us, right, yeah.
When did they extend that to the
Um, I believe
It's 2025, I just remember that one, so
I think so, um, I think so, but I, I believe the virtual member is
Yeah, that
It has been around longer than
That was before COVID.
That's before COVID, because people could call in if they were unable to come for some, for some reason. They were traveling, they were ill, they had to be here for an important conversation or vote. That's definitely been around for, prior to 2020.
Yeah, it might have been just a year or so before.
I believe so.
It was kind of eerie how it all happened.
It was
Yeah, because all of us, I, I, we had to vote with capital to be able to do that as well.
Yes.
And then I think another big piece of this is when we actually do reach out to the community, hey, it is livestream, blah, blah, blah. It's very clear in there, we're not answering questions, we're not doing all that.
Yeah, of course.
We want, it's, exactly.
We want you to be able to listen.
We want you to be able to listen, and if you have issues and want to talk, we are more than happy to have you come to our actual meeting and, you know, face to face.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, I think they'd have to ask to come to a future meeting if like something, like if something they were listening to, they would have to be like, you know, you have to submit the request.
But they, the agenda is posted in advance as well. So if they're, they look at the agenda and there's something that they're like, oh, I'm really interested in that, people are more than welcome. We don't want anyone getting into accidents on 123. It's not just to get here.
People are breaking down doors to be here, so
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
It's not the hottest ticket to town.
Yeah, really. All right. What's up, Peter?
On Tuesday, when I was at the girls' basketball game, I went home to view the rest of the panel were meeting at all, well, and I took notes on their, just like during COVID.
Yes, exactly.
Peter, you know what I appreciate the most?
What?
You just raised your hand. That was really funny.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's Jerry.
All right. Okay, so then I think we can move on to a discussion of capital requests. Christine, you're up.
All right. So the very first one is for the FY25 half over request for spring town meeting is the one that we have on the agenda a little bit now, is the, again, the second exit access road over there, over here. There's a Tri-City Auto Park. Again, it's just the top coat layer. And right now, we talked to highway department, and we talked to Jared, and it's still the same quote, it's still the same price. It hasn't gone down. We're hoping that the asphalt price goes down by the spring, but we will let you know when that happens. But right now, it still stands at like 75,000. The next one is the final lease payment on one of our mini buses from 2021. That is due, that was due this December. We got the final invoice though, right before our capital meeting in October. So that's why we pushed off to the spring. That's for 22,000. And the final one is our new ELA curriculum for grades K through 5. I know that Dr. Ackman can talk more about this if you have any questions, but currently, we are field testing two new ELA programs. Both of those tests will be completed before February vacation. We put a placeholder in here for 300,000. Dr. Ackman is trying to get a DESI grant to pay for half of that, but we obviously don't know if that's what the price will be yet, because they have a pick a choice. And obviously, that's going to come to fruition. So we put the full amount estimate on there right now, knowing that it might change a little bit.
So when we say we're field testing, so I assume the 300 is a cost for both sets of curriculum, or is it?
No, in choosing one set of instructional materials, an estimated range in terms of what we would pay a vendor is 300,000. There's an opportunity for us as part of the grant to offset that by 50%. The 300,000 number is a pretty close estimate. But again, once we get a formalized quote from each vendor, we'll have a more delineated line-by-line cost.
That's about market, Dan, for a literacy program for elementary students. So we're really looking K to 5. Preschool potentially would be added as well at some point. Dr. Ackman is going through the process that Mrs. Dietz and I presented to you last year in terms of our new math program. So looking at two programs, we're really fortunate to be working with really great companies that have not charged us a penny to do the pilot, so they provided us all the materials for free, so that way our teachers and our students can have everything they need in their classrooms and conduct these visits, these like field tests, which is really great. So hopefully, they'll be able to come out in the spring and give you their recommendation.
So we're slated to finish up with the field test of the first unit on the 22nd of December. We're going to give everybody a break, come back, and then onboard the second field test the first week we return from winter recess. And then we'll finish that process by February vacation. The team will then come together and make a recommendation end of February, but not later than the very beginning of March. We've tried to be really proactive with the process, to try and build in as many knowns as possible. And we keep on knocking on wood with DESI. We know that they've been generous with offering grants, and we also know the process is competitive. I'm optimistic because we have a great process here, we have a great infrastructure. We've shown proof of concept that we've been able to do this successfully. But we just have to hope that DESI sees the efficacy of the work that we're doing.
So what's the timeline to submit? So I know we submit warrants by a certain time, but if we're measuring what that final number looks like, when can we make changes to the warrant?
Yes, so we, we can really make changes to the warrant up until the week before town meeting. All of these capital requests need to be in by the 20th of December, which is extremely early. So Christine and I and Wade have been really, you know, with the whole team, working on these, making sure that we really have prioritized what our, what our requests are here. And then we can, we can make changes up until that, up until that point. We'll have a better idea of what we actually receive for grant funding, if we are lucky enough. And we'll also have a better idea of what program we're going with. You know, talking with Brian, we put in the high number, knowing that it really should not go, it will not go over that amount. And that, you know, anything that we would just say to them and say, okay, you know, it's only 175, or whatever it may be. But trying to make sure that we cover our bases here, so that way we're not asking for more down the road. I think the other important thing for the committee to know is that we have not put a curriculum request in capital, probably, I'm going to say, for the last dozen years. Maybe, I don't want to go say dozen, maybe 10, right, 10 years? Because we have been able to utilize school choice funds in order to subsidize our curriculum requests and our curriculum purchases for the last many, many years. Unfortunately, as we all know, we are using more of our school choice funds all the time in order to subsidize our general budget, pay for staffing, and, you know, materials and supplies. So this is, we're going back to our roots with this request. So there may be some questions from the capital committee and why this is something that is new and they haven't seen this in a while.
Along these lines, I know we had a discussion before the meeting regarding that email request. Are we prepared to talk about that as part of capital, or is that for the, for the sidewalks? Would that be a capital, or would that be a separate warrant?
It would be a separate warrant.
Yeah.
We can add it to our agenda in January. That way, it gives Christine and I a little bit more time too. I know they just talked about it yesterday at their safety and school meeting.
The paving, just maybe think about it again.
So we'll, we'll chat about it, and raise some additional information in January.
I think my only two things on this would be, I mean, but obviously, this is without the tech needs, so you're probably adding another $40,000 to take or take.
That, yeah, that, that will be our request in the fall. So they paid the, they gave us the first payment of the 40,000 this fall. We'll go back to them at fall of '24 to ask for that.
Correct, Mike, sorry, yes. My concern is here is in the next year, we're asking for 594,000. Do we want to try to balance that out a little bit?
I think it's one of those things, what we request and ask for are vastly different. We had, when I was on capital, one of my years, we had a million dollar request, and we got like 200,000 total. So I mean, it's just for, I think, our method is we need to put all of our requests in this nice little form. And, but when you go to the capital, they're like, no, 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 yes, no, yes, no. So I mean, I think for us, it's good to track it this way, but not necessarily be approved.
And, and we, we might tweak this again, this, this setup. My brain, I'm a very linear person, and so I love that we have like the safety and security bucket, we have a facilities bucket, and the student achievement bucket. I love that, because you can say, well, this is our priority in this category, this is our priority in this category. But my brain doesn't necessarily line up with this exactly. So that's why Christine also included the narrative, where are you on the left? That will go to the capital request, so that kind of says, okay, these are the three things that we're really going to be asking you for this year. Also, just, Nick, in terms of your question and seeing this out, we did get a rather large ask in the fall. I don't think any of us ever imagined that we were going to get as much money as we did in the fall, which I'm thrilled about and feel thankful to the capital committee and, you know, for our residents for approving that. I think one of the things that I know Karen, Mrs. Wensworth is still here, we're going to be coming probably in the fall, talking about technology displaced for Norton High School. The ones that are there, the smart boards were installed with the new, with the building project. They're 10 years old, and they are 100% at end of life. So that is something that we'll likely have to add to that. The athletic floors will come up again, and then we're going to be pushing probably for furniture starting here at Norton Middle School. The desks
Get rid of these
Well, that's classroom, classroom furniture, unfortunately. All of our new curriculum that we have here is, is going really well, and it's super collaborative. And the teachers, the, the students still have the same desks that I'm sure Justine and Nick sat in when they were students here. and Nick sat in when they were students here, that, that chair is connected to the desk, you have to move it, like, if you want to do a small group, it, like, the classrooms are just not conducive to teaching and learning the way that we want to see it, and so that's probably going to be our next bigger class.
On record, I had those kind of seats, too.
Right?
But I'm a little offended, you said Nick and.
No, the same, I meant, I meant, they're actually the same chairs.
Actual chairs.
They're actually the same chairs as when you were here at Norton Middle School.
All right.
Well, I mean, I, I think historically, I, I mean, I think gym floors have been on there at my own, on the committee.
Yes, and, and we're really fortunate that we've been able to do the high school, the middle school, high school, the Yell, and now the middle school. The big ones will be LGN and JCS because of the asbestos glue underneath. That's going to be, those are going to be huge projects, just because of the design of them, and we're going to have to do a huge amount of remediation, just to make sure that we don't have a problem with asbestos.
We might not have to do that either.
Oh.
Maybe, I'm in a rut, something a little different, but.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
Because we have, we're doing our flooring, so regardless.
We've had an asbestos experience, and it's not fun, I really don't want to live there again.
Sometimes now, we'll force the heavy ones there down.
Oh, and then go right over it, okay.
Including, if you want to do, not that, we do hardwood and JCS, for example, but.
Yeah, the rubber floors are great for elementary students.
No, I mean, and again, I guess that's my other point, too, is it's like, you know, we got to get this in, obviously, December twentieth, and then like, we basically have all week to say, yes, this is good. Can we just make sure we get like two meetings to go over this, just so if there's anything we need to add? You know, and again, like, my concern, how long have you been on the committee?
This is year nine.
Year nine, and like, we still have enough time to get new floors, but that, to me, is an issue.
Definitely.
Because we can't say it's a priority, or it's on our fiscal year of twenty-six, and then it gets pushed off nine years. I know COVID happened, and, you know, it, it, things get messed up, and things get extended and everything else, but like, I want to be better moving forward, that like, okay, this is an actual concern, and we need to upgrade it, let's get it upgraded, you know, it might be a three-year window, it might be a five-year window, but it shouldn't be a committee member who's sitting here for nine years and nothing is getting done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I couldn't.
I mean, it comes down to priorities, I mean, I think with the high, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the high school floor, we, we lucked out because there was damage when we did the high school renovation, so that was a big chunk of the cost.
But it just was not included as part of the addition and renovation. That was, it was initially as part of the project.
It was staged, yeah.
Yes, and it got bumped off because of cost, so we were fortunate to get that. And then the high, the Yale School, we had a flood, because all of the utilities were below the gym floor, and a pipe burst, and so therefore, insurance paid for a good portion of the Yale School gym to be refinished.
So, I think, too, just to explain the books, I've been sitting on capital for, what, seven years, and we did it before, hey, but.
Yeah.
You know, we only have so much money, too, right, and so we have so many departments that we've got to do, and so when looking at this, when we were able to kind of fix it internally, we chose to do that, to save money, so that we could appropriate money other places. So that's part of the, I, I just don't want you to think that things sat there for so long because we weren't, you know.
No, but I, what my, yeah, no, no, I totally get that.
Yeah.
Just nine thousand departments in town, and the money's always so, you know, it's all, it's all far. I totally get that.
It's a whole story.
Correct, but if we're making it a push, that's, it's on our list, but it shouldn't, you know, we should be like, all right, you know, this is a five-year old window, now it's at four years, now it's at three, now it's at end of life, we don't have a choice, we have to get this done, and that we, we need to do a better job of telling capital, hey, this is not a, you know, we can wait on this another year or two years.
Right, and I think that's what they have done, it's just when things were able to be done internally, to, to have effects, that's when we just kind of pushed it, but just kind of kept it there, because we knew that eventually we would definitely need it, so I think that's, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of how it went this whole history with these floors.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I mean, I always think of this as kind of like our master repair plan, I mean, we have safeties, like, obviously, you know, safety and security is our top priority, that's kind of, you know, we need everybody to be safe in our buildings, I don't necessarily need the top of the line floor, you know, that's where we have, but I mean, like I said, for nine years, I've seen one gym floor or another, you know, the, when I first started, it was this roof in this building, which was patchwork at best, you know.
I mean, how long are the fire panels on that?
Yeah.
Like, it's, so, we're so fortunate and so thankful to be able to have done so many great projects this fall, and, you know, hopeful that, you know, going forward with an ask that's not too big could potentially allow us to get a few more things done this year, and we'll come back in the fall with it, with another, you know, request as well, so. So, we just need the committee to vote.
What did it say, vote? That was just a discussion.
Okay, then we're good.
Just one more thing, too, and then like, again, I, I know we talked about this with the fire panels.
Quotes.
Quotes. We have one. I'm assuming there might be something tied to DPW.
Yeah, so that is, so the DPW would be doing the work, and this would be the materials cost. The other thing that, you know, with your blessing, I would like to reach out to Parks and Rec, because of the tricentennial playground that is right there, and also to DPW, because I think this really needs to be a shared endorsement from the three departments, because it's not necessarily a school property that we're going to be looking to pave over. Yes, we're going to be using it as our second entrance, for those of us who have done pickup and drop-off and been there during those times of the day, it's crazy, and we definitely need that second entrance, but it's going to be great for our families that bring their children to the playground, and it's, it's, it's really a town project, in my opinion.
I think you definitely have to, because then, now that we're doing the pickleball courts, too, and it's a one-way, I think that it absolutely needs to be a joint backyard.
Definitely seems, it definitely seems like, I get it, it's at the schools, but there's also standpoint here, a very safety concern from a PE standpoint as well, of, you know, not having just one entrance to do it anywhere.
And I think when you can go to the capital committee and say, I've spoken with, you know, the, the rec department, I've spoken with the police department, I've spoken with, just like we did with the fire panel, I spoke with Chief Simmons, we both are in agreement that this needs to happen.
Do we have to do anything with this request with the state, because that's going on to a state road, or is it because we're?
No, because I believe we're just doing it right up to the sidewalk, so we're actually not touching the sidewalk.
I just don't want any surprises, like.
No, we're coming, yeah, we're coming in through the back way.
Just wait, wait for the sidewalk to talk for that.
Yes, the sidewalk, I'm playing tree in time, we might be okay.
Yeah.
With that, doing that exit, exit, what, exit, right?
Yes.
There will be like lines or signs, or, I mean, it just, I bring my kids there, and it stresses me out, I don't bring them at that pickup, or, yeah, pickup time, so just wanted to, they'll be.
Yes, and so that's something we'll, we'll have further conversation about, that we designated parking spaces and designated, like.
We should.
And it's just an exit, it's not, it should not, people should not be entering the parking lot and going into the middle school that way, it is designed to just be an exit for people that are taking a right onto one twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's actually, it has been really beneficial for our buses and for cars to be able to get out and just take that right, definitely making a big difference, all right.
Taking a left out of this, oh boy.
Yeah.
It's almost as bad as the high school, but the high school is worse.
Yeah. Well, just even traffic flow coming from like Freeman this way, it's definitely been, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely made a difference.
Because people are flowing faster.
If you miss time on your commute, forget it.
Yes, yeah.
I think the other day, I was down to Tasty's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was the middle school, I'm like, oh my gosh.
Well, it's, it's our main road, it's our, and four of our schools are on it.
Well, and, and that's like one of, and this historically, I mean, being the newest ground-up school, it's only, you know, twenty-five years old, to not have a second access point? Like, we have the emergency exit that I don't think any emergency vehicle can get out of, because anything over that way is probably going to crush the ground and not be able to get out around the courts.
On the, on the other side, see, on the other side of the bank, there is actually an egress, but it's, it's very small, and it's like kind of on someone's property, but kind of not, and the Oak Street exit, like, you can't even drive car there.
You'd be able to turn a bus on Oak Street if you went through the woods.
I don't even know where the road is, like, I'm sure it was there at some point, but not there now.
I think the issue is when you built this, that the farm, the family, one of the houses there, for.
Yeah. I mean, I remember digging over here when we did the well for soccer, it was clay, twenty feet.
All right, we think we might have to vote, but it doesn't say to vote, so we will not vote, and if we need to, we will come back in January and vote that.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And we don't have to discuss it at that point, we just discussed this, everything was fine.
Yeah, and I, like, that's the format I would like to go to, too.
Okay, that's great.
Because I think this is good, and then if we need to bring it in back, it gives us.
It gives us an opportunity to do that, yeah.
Right.
We like to vote before you, we have to turn it in, just for our own sake, but we can turn it in.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're aware of it, when you turn it in, and fine with that, because we have the discussion, but, and then we can just vote that we, you know, essentially vote that we submitted it.
Exactly.
And I think last year, we voted in January as well, and we turned it in in December.
All right.
I mean, should we take a vote to make sure we're good, or should we not do that?
No, we can't.
Because we can't, it's not gonna.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, so acknowledgement and vote to accept cash donation.
So, one of our policies is that anytime there is a cash donation to the district, we, I'm to bring it to you, and we just vote to accept the funding into the line that either is designated, for the purposes designated, so, and basically, the committee, by taking the vote, directs me as a superintendent to utilize the funding as appropriate, and then also reach out to whoever made the donation and thank them on your behalf. So, I'm very pleased to let you know that we have had a three thousand dollar donation from the Stern family, that is, they would like for us to use for art supplies at all five of our schools, so with your approval, I will reach out to them and thank them, and we'll do some more.
Awesome.
It is really awesome, I was, you know, feel lucky to have such generous families.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I would be curious, though, just to see what it's, kind of like, nor need, like, get some sort of information on what they're using it on?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, once, once it's attributed to the departments, just kind of give us an idea, like, they don't have to come before us, you know, if they want to put it in a memo to you to share with us, just to make sure we're making good use of this tremendous donation from the Stern family.
Yes.
All right, so we have to make a motion to vote to accept the cash donation?
Yes.
Should, should we just go over what it is, where it's going, just as a shout?
Sure, so they have asked that crayons be purchased for every child at the JCS and LGN, five hundred dollars should be distributed to the Yale Art Department, five hundred dollars to the Norton Middle School Art Department, and five hundred dollars to the Norton High School Art Department.
Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
I've never heard you speak, so listen. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right. Great, thank you again, Stern family. Okay, FY25 budget process update, back to you.
So, we, this last, since we last had, we received all the budget requests from the different departments and building principals, so we, as we discussed before, we asked them to submit us a level service budget, which was retain the same level of services that they currently have to maintain the same programming for all the students. This week, we, Dr. Ackerman, Dr. Miano, and myself, we met with the middle school, the elementary school principals, and next week, we have more departments to meet with, where we're going over each of their individual requests, and going from there before we meet collectively as a group. Just to let you know where we're headed, we have not put in any of their position requests yet, the only additional personnel position that we put in was we replaced the kindergarten position that we had at the JCS, because we've always had a placeholder at the LGN and JCS, we took those out during the budget process last year, we just put that back into safety just right now, everything else is exactly the same. And there's so many new, there's still so many variables with special ed and out of district, transportation costs, but right now, still not knowing any grant offsets and other things, we were headed in the double-digit category, so.
So, I think it's, thank you, Christine, I think it's really important, and I shared this information with our staff, and I've shared with our families, of, you know, having conversations about what a level-funded budget actually means, it means, sorry, excuse me, level service budget, thank you, yikes, level service is the same amount of money, a level, but level funded is the same amount of money, level service is the same amount of services, so, you know, when we're looking at all of these things, we're looking at contractual salary increases, our teachers' contracts were settled, we're going into year three, it's a two-point-seven-five increase, we also have teachers that are, you know, expanding and furthering their education, which we're thrilled that they're doing, it's always great when teachers are able to do that, which means that they move up a, you know, a category with, if they have their masters or their masters plus thirty credits, our staff get, you know, credit for the number of years that they are in service in Norton Public Schools, up to fifteen years, and once you reach that fifteen year, that kind of just caps out. We're also, you know, looking at our special education costs, as our committee knows, we've had a significant increase in the level of need for our students this year, our students that are moving in, those are mandated services, we are required to provide them, so those costs are really significant for us, you know, not just providing services here in district, but also looking at our out-of-district placements for students that were not able to meet their educational needs here, and also the cost of transporting those students to and from their educational placement. For all of us who have gone to the grocery store anytime in the last six months, we know that the, just day-to-day costs of things, looking at our facilities costs in term of operations and maintenance, providing cleaning materials in our schools, paper towels, like, I know this sounds crazy, but toilet paper in our bathrooms, all of these have increased costs to our schools, just that they have increased costs to our families. The, there's like a miscellaneous category that we look at, the, the best example are us as substitutes, so if we allocate a hundred thousand dollars for substitutes, and then we have a large number of staff that may be sick or have chronic medical conditions or may be blessed to be out on a maternity leave, those are additional costs to us. The town, it's almost like their snow fund, if we have a really, you know, big winter, we have, we always talk about replacing some of those funds for overtime and snow removal at our spring town meeting. And then the outside revenue category, it, it's something that's really important for us to keep talking about and keep bringing up, both at our meetings and we're having conversations in the community. In the nineteen-twenty school year, we were starting to have conversations about this fiscal cliff that was coming.
Nineteen-twenty, twenty, twenty twenty?
I, no.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Nineteen, twenty nineteen, it's like twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
I'm twenty, good you have public education.
God, I'm tired, I'm not that tired. And so, we, we knew this was coming, and all of our public schools, the federal government, the state government, had such an influx of funds over those years, and we'll be sharing like exactly how much money we received in those years. That money saved us from these fiscal cliffs, but we were not able to use it for one-time purchases like many communities were able to do for curriculum, or, no, there were, there were times where we were able to use some of those things, but the majority of that funding went to staff, to keep us from having this conversation at the town level. It's not there anymore, you know, like, this current year, we're using five hundred thousand dollars of S R funds, we're starting off this budget season, five hundred, without that five hundred thousand dollars, because it doesn't exist, we no longer have that. Additionally, school choice, in the years past, we were able to move a million dollars of school choice, roll it over for the next year, because we didn't need it for the budget, we need it for the budget, and so I don't want to sound like all I'm doing is talking about the budget, but I'm trying to make sure that as a, as a committee and as a community, that we're, we're understanding the impact that the budget has on our day-to-day, and, you know, the things that need is able to do for us, it's, it's really important for us to keep revisiting this topic, because it's going to be a really good one for us this year.
I think it's also important to point out, too, because you just mentioned the, you know, increase for staff, and, you know, something else you just mentioned about staff, I, I think it's also important to mention publicly that it's not like our staff is way overpaid compared to districts that are comparable to us, I just think it is very important to state that, because I don't need to hear anybody, you know, on social media saying our teachers are overpaid, and that's why we have this budget issue, that is absolutely not the case at all.
Well, I mean, every, every department in town with, with union contracts has, you know, police, fire, highway, they all have reasonable increases, ours is reasonable, Ours is reasonable, I remember the negotiations, I mean, it's not, you know...
We just have a lot more people.
Exactly. I mean, we're the, we're, we have 400-plus employees, I mean, that's a big nugget, when you only have, you know, that's probably more than, you know, half, if not, you know, more than half of the rest of the town, you know, but...
But compared to other towns around us, though, our teachers are not paid...
Absolutely not.
...the same as other communities. I just wanna make that very clear.
Just, you know, speaking, while we're on that topic of staff, I know, you know, from, from when I started on the committee till, till now, when we look at like that top 10, you know, first aid, we're not seeing as many retirements in the next couple of years, I would say.
No. Our, our top 10 seniority teachers, you would be shocked at who they are and their ages, because they're not at retirement age. You know, we, we'll see a few retirements, we, you know, we've heard of it from a few people already, that they're going to be retiring by the end of this year.
There was a couple of in-year retirements, too, Greg.
Yeah, so we had, for example, we had a fifth grade teacher that retired at the end of November. We had a special education teacher that retired at the end of October. So, we have had a few, and that's, that was some of the things that were able to save us some money this year, and, you know, handle some of the special education costs that have increased since July 1. So, we're, we're trying to do the best we can and be really creative with the funding that we have. Sherry, to your point, I have some really great data that I will share with the committee, and I'll probably put it in my newsletter that goes out as well, that rate, that ranks our teachers and their salaries in a couple of different ways, but it really looks at not only our surrounding communities, but also those districts that we're considered to be comparable with at the state level. So, I think that's really important for, for families and for our community to see. And also, what do we pay per pupil versus our surrounding communities, versus our like communities in the state? And then another, another group that people would like to talk about is your athletic conference. When you look at our, you know, district against some of our TBL competitors, we're very off-base.
Yeah.
But I, I'll show all three of those groups, so that people can have an understanding of kind of where we fall in those two categories.
I think it's kinda tough to look at our neighbors, because we're surrounded by, you know, at least four cities. You know, and one of our neighbors can, you know, their school department could ask for anything in an override, and it's passed 97% of the time, our friends in Easton. But, I mean, we, I, I hesitate anytime to compare ourselves to like Attleboro, to Attleboro, Mansfield, Taunton, you know, even Dyne, Rehoboth. So, I mean, I, I like to see those as, as our neighbors, but I, you know, I like to look at like the East Bridewaters, the Abingtons, you know, they're, but, I mean, our per pupil cost has always been historically low. And a lot of people like to mention, a lot of categories we're at for Fox, you know, compared to Foxborough, but...
There's one major difference.
Yeah, it's called Group One. But I think historically, though, if you look at the makeup of their schools, they have, they're admin-heavy, where we're not. We're very lean in our admin.
And the Department of Education actually has something, it's called a DART tool, and really what it does is it takes a look at your enrollment, looks at like socioeconomics of the community, it looks at diversity of the community, and it's probably about 10 to 12 communities that we can go in and really say, okay, these communities are more like us than our neighbors. And that's a good way to kinda see where we fall, just in the grand scheme of things. So, I'm actually in the process of putting all of that data together for you. I'll probably send one out with the first January newsletter, I'll probably send the other out with the second January newsletter, just because I feel like it's really, really important for us to have conversations about these things, and for our community to have a point of comparison. Because if you, if we've lived here for a long time, or if we, this is what we know. And so, it, it's really important to have those, those resources to be able to have conversations.
I think also looking back at last year, you know, when we had this room packed with people, because they were angry about cuts that were gonna have to be made. I think it's very important for this information to come out, like you have been doing, and I hope to God people are paying attention, because when we have to make tough decisions, people are coming for us. And we have been trying to say this, some of us, for seven, eight years, that this is coming. We were not kidding, here it is.
And the only reason we've survived is because of all of the federal monies that we're receiving.
So, to, you know, Sherry just mentioned this, we were very late in the process to know how this is going to affect our day-to-day operations in the school department. How early do we know, like, if this is our budget, do we know right away what's that, what that staff number effect is? Because I know historically, we, we have an idea, we wait for town meeting, you know, and, and frankly speaking, when we were talking about cuts, it was like our last meeting of the year, when essentially our budgets closed.
It was Brian's first meeting.
Yeah, and, so, so that was the thing, is at that point of the year, it's too late.
Yes.
It's too late to make these changes. So, I think, you know, one of those things we always talk about is feel the pain, feel the pain. We need, unfortunately, we need to feel the pain in like March. And I hate to say that, because I, I wouldn't wanna be someone that says, if there's 20 staff spots affected, that's a tough rest of the year for some people. Unfortunately, that's the reality, I think.
So, we're, we're having conversations already. We, you know, as a central office team, we are constantly having conversations about, you know, where can we be flexible, let's look at this a little bit differently. As Christine mentioned, she and I and Brian are meeting, we met with the middle school, then we met with all three elementary principals together, because let's look at those three buildings as a set, instead of looking at them individually. We're meeting with the high school on Monday, meeting with special ed separately. And then what we'll do is we're all gonna be in the room together and say, okay, these are some of the things that we've talked about so far. How can we keep the cuts away from teaching and learning for our students as, as much as we possibly can? Where do we have flexibility? How conducive are our schedules to looking at staffing? Could we change our schedules a little bit and perhaps, you know, be able to reach more of our students in, in a more effective way? And so, we have to look at some of the root causes. Scheduling, the needs of students, we have to look at special education, we have to look at core instruction, to see where, where are we missing the ball? Are there things that we could be doing differently in the core academic classroom, so we wouldn't necessarily be looking at special education numbers as really, really high? Because when you say Norton has a special education problem, we don't. We have a, we have a core education problem, where we're not meeting the students before we get to that.
It's a funding problem, it's a special education problem.
So, it's, it's, it's a really multifaceted problem. So, it's, we will be having conversations, Christine and I are meeting with Mike and James next week, to sit down and have a conversation about kind of where we're at and what they're thinking. I don't, I, I think it's really important that we're very transparent in what our costs are and what our needs are. And I don't mean this disrespectfully at all, but I'm sure that the finance committee or the other committees in town, or the town board might say...
My pleasure.
Thank you. How dare they come with a X percentage budget? We're telling you what our needs are. It's, it's, it's our responsibility to advocate for our students and to say, this is what we need to do the job we're currently doing.
Well, I, I think that's the narrative, that we, it's not a need, like, this isn't what we, this is have-to-have, this isn't want-to-have, need-to-have, wish-to-have, this is, this is it.
There are no wants in this budget. These, these are needs that we, we need to have in order to effectively run our schools day-to-day, to educate our students at the level that we're educating them now. And I think that, as someone who's been here for a long time, our teachers do an incredible job, day in and day out, and they've done that with limited resources for a very, very long time.
And they stick with us for years.
Yes.
They don't just give up and go somewhere else, they really do stick with us.
And I think it's important that we know, I know that I'm not going to get that percentage number, I know we're going to be sitting here and having cuts. But it doesn't make the need go away. The need is still there, and, and I say that as respectfully as I can, to say, we need to figure out this problem at a town level.
You know, here's my kinda two cents on this, because I, I totally understand needs and wants and whatnot. And like, to me, though, I don't, I see it all easy from a 3,000-foot, whatever, like, we've had positions that have been granted in through, whether RISA or this, that, the other thing, whatever, historically, within the schools, this can go back 25 years, we get a grant, we fund that position, and then we find a way, in the two years or five years, whatever that grant runs out to keep that person on. That is ideal, that is the situation that you would love to have, because you get the teacher in, whatever that person may be doing for math, whatever, you know, you keep him on. The issue is, is we're now getting to that point, where those grant monies are running out, we don't have the ability to keep that person on anymore. So, like, at, at the same point, like, I get it, there are needs, but I, I still truly do believe there are points where we really need to look at, from a school committee's standpoint, where are we, where, where is the fat? And I know there's not a whole lot of fat left, but where are some areas that we can find to say, hey, listen, you know what? We're, we're not gonna offer this elective anymore, we're going back to reading, writing, and math. You know, we're not going to do this. And again, does it take away from level service? Sure it does.
Yep.
It does. But at the same time, we're also doing what we need to do to make sure our numbers are fitting what the town is going to give us, you know? And those are, and I, again, I get they're gonna be difficult conversations, and I think to Sherry's point, we're spot-on, is like, the quicker we can get some of that information out of like, what that pecking order's going to look like, is probably going to be more beneficial. In fact, to Dan's point, trying not to wait till the last meeting to do it would be ideal. And again, I think from us five, you know, obviously with, with admin support, we really need to start figuring out like, you know, what are, what's our goals here? You know? Because we can sit here and complain and whine about, we don't have money, we don't have money, the money's not coming, you know? And I know the big override keeps getting talked about and everything else, if that gets onto the April ballot, I would be shocked. Maybe it will, I don't think it will personally. If it gets on, I don't see it passing. Did a great job trying to get the override passed, whatever, five, six years ago, whatever it was.
2016, 2017.
Thank you, Peter. But like, it got crushed then, I don't see what's flipped in town to be going for an override at this standpoint, with, like we just said about going to the grocery store. The last thing people are gonna say is, oh, great, my tax is gonna go up another $300.
Well, we already have the town hall and student center and the fields.
Of course, yeah.
I just don't, yeah.
Again, perfect world, yeah, we get, you know, X amount of money in the tree out back, we can go cut down thousands of dollars. It's not what's going to happen, you know? So, I think we really need to be realistic about this, and really start, you know, not just, not just talking about it, but really start deep diving into, hey, listen, you know, this is where we're at, and, and, you know, like I said last year, when Joe was sitting here, it's, it's hard for me to look at any teacher and say, hey, you know what? You know, they're the most important people in our buildings, you know? So, i- if it's something that, you know, I know we have like three high school administrators, do we have to start looking at a position there? Do we have to start looking at people in central office? I don't know what it is, but we really need to start getting, you know, and I think, to the data point, and looking at, you know, how many administrators do we have, how many teachers do we have, what areas can we improve on? You know, can we do X more with this? That really needs to be the conversation, not this conversation of, you know, we know the financial cliff's here, we know doomsday's coming, if you will, what does that look like, and what is it gonna mean? Because if we don't start rearing up, we're, we're going to be in the same situation we were last year, and then yet again, last year, what did we lose? Kinda nothing. Music came right back, chorus came right back. That's the historical thing of the schools, you know, that, that's what, we've been our own worst enemies, you know?
And, you know, Sherry said it, year after year after year, it, it's hard to sit here and do things that you know are gonna hurt kids.
Yeah.
And to hurt our staff, and to hurt our team. But we have to have these conversations, and, and we're having them, and saying, okay, you know, the grant piece, you're absolutely right, we add positions because we're able to fund them, and we move them into the budget. We can't necessarily continue to do that. So, we have, what are our goals? We have been doing a ton of work around IMTS, and making sure that we're providing students with just-in-time interventions, making sure that we're looking at the supports in the general education classroom. We know that is the ticket for us to, to help us with our special education issue, for us to help us with our reading scores, all those things that we're talking about and that we're concerned about. So, in that, in the interest of our goals, what are the things that we can afford to say, okay, this is maybe something that we cannot do right now? But I'm also not going to name people in February and, you know, you know, give them all that time. But it has to really be a collaborative conversation from our entire team, with the school committee involved, and, and, and having conversations that are, are really difficult to have. We wanna save the day, right? But ultimately, I've been here for 20 years, we've saved the day for 20 years. I got laid off three years in a row, I got a pink slip, it wasn't pink, that was where it said. And I was, I came back every year, whether it was through retirement, or funding, or whatever that may be, and I'm so thankful for that, and I'm, I'm thankful that we are able to find funds and, and ways to keep our students. We're an academic institution.
And I think we, and we talk about that year over year, like, and last year was a perfect example, you know, we got our budget, we make these cuts as we have to do, because that's our budget, and then things happen. That's the problem is, you know, there's that narrative that looks at us saving the day, it's, it's not really saving the day, it's, well, this happened, this teacher takes this role, so, you know, this teacher can be rehired. That happens in every district, you know? So, and I, and I hate to hear that we're saving the day, we're, we're not really saving the day, we're just saying, you know, it's kinda like you're walking down the street and, yo, I found $20. So, we're, we're, we're not finding any money that wasn't there, it's, if I have a teacher that's been here for 30 years making $100,000, and they retire, thank you for your service, I'm not hiring another teacher at $100,000. So, it's, it's, it's kinda like this, this game of numbers, but it's not, we're not finding money, we're not saving the day, we're just saying...
The money's the same.
Yeah, the money's still the same, or even less, but it's, you know, like I said, last year, a perfect example, where one teacher moves to, you know, a different position that was open.
Yeah.
One teacher, yes, was not rehired, and the other teacher was rehired. So, it's just, it's not, but there is pain.
People have actually said, though, like, with what happened last year, people have said, you should've let people feel the pain, right? Like, people have said that to me. And my point of view, and if I'm wrong, then I step down today, because I don't sit in this chair, elected, to do something to prove a point that will hurt our students, ever. I will never make that decision. If there are funds reallocated, then I will do what I can to make sure our students have what they need and deserve, right? And we are in this situation right now, because we refused as a community to step up and do what really needed to be done a long time ago. So, we continue to be here, and, and honestly, Nick, like, I, I love hearing what you're saying, and I welcome you and Justine to, through a, a new lens, bring new ideas to us. Because three of us have been doing this for a long time, and we've had these conversations, and here we are, still begging the community. And listen, I'm not just doing this for the, for the schools, I wish we had a thriving park and rec department, we still have a part-time employee there. There's so many departments that are so underfunded, because we refuse to acknowledge who we wanna be when we grow up. Like, I, I just, so, bring the ideas, we'd love to hear them, and, and maybe, you know, you guys being newer, is, is the perfect thing to help us get to that point, because, you know, I, I just, I don't know what else to do at this point, I really don't.
You know, and, and I think, you know, circling back, the end of last year, we did everything we had to do. You know, we had positions that were eliminated, we had a staff member take a different position, so the, so the pain was there. You know, we, we lived within our means, as they like to say. And then things happened, where there's movement, there's not a rehire, there's a retirement, this is, so, and then we had to go bring staff back, and then that happens, like I said, every, every school district in the state has those issues every year.
It's kinda like playing fantasy football, right? And, you know, your guy gets injured, and you're able to bring somebody else onto your roster on a great day. And that's always what I think about when we play this game in the spring and in the summer, I, I've been playing this game for a long time. It used to be, I used to play it because I was worried that I wasn't gonna have a job. And I'm like, well, this person has baby, and this person, you know, retires, and this person decides... We used to play this game all the time. But it's, it's true, and, you know, we're very fortunate, tho- those types of things are our saving breaks, to be able to put money aside towards special education, towards transportation, that just, you just can't predict. And there's no, there's no easy answer here, right? There's, it's, they're difficult conversations that we've been having for a very long time, and I, I feel silly to keep coming back and saying the same thing, that I know you guys heard jokes say for 10 years, it's just the reality of the situation.
And unfortunately, as we've learned, you know, historically, we have the conversations at the local level, but it doesn't really go anywhere, because the local levels, you know, are trying to do what they can with their, their pot of gold. And unfortunately, we've talked to state senators, we've had, you know, meetings with 20 other school departments and representatives here, and I'm gonna work for you, the people. No, you're not. You know, because they don't, they, they've never said, you know what, I work for Norton, here's an extra X amount of money that I put in the budget for you, Norton.
I actually saw Dr. Bieta earlier today, and we were having this conversation, and he's like, well, you know, I'm gonna about, get about five or six more million, five or six million dollars more next year with the Student Opportunity Act. with the Student Opportunity Act. And I'm like, I'm going to get 30 bucks a kid. That's the disparity, right? So communities like Norton, right? So, I mean, that's exactly it right there. So Norton will see another $65,000 and places like Stoughton will get five or six million. That is, that's the disparity.
Jen, speaking of, can you circle back with the joint meeting?
Yes.
Because I know we wanted to, you talked about doing it regularly in January. So now that we're in the middle of December, maybe we can get a date?
Yeah, I will reach out tomorrow.
Yeah, I think Jen, to your point too, because it actually brought up a great topic, was, you know, expenditures per pupil, like districts, that's all the stuff that's like exactly what we need to see where we actually are, you know? And I think Dan Tia, you're spot on. You can't compare us to Attleboro or Easton or Mansfield, we're not those towns, you know? We're close to them, you know, but we're not. Yeah, exactly, that's pretty much it. And then, I think based on that as well, based on Washington meeting, sorry, Brian, but with, with the MCAS testing in general, like, I think that's the type of data too that is very important when we're having these conversations. That data of like the state, like, you know, I know Dinesh kept saying like, what's the state average? What's the state average? That's great to know, you know, but the state is comprised of most of 357.
351.
351, thank you. Great, cool.
Springfield, Kentucky, Lawrence.
We're, we're talking, that's cool, but that's not really an average either. It is the average of the state, like, that's not Norton, you know? So again, those like districts, what are they spending? You know, and again, I do think that kind of helps, you know, in, in an area too. Because Easton seeing, you know, what are they spending per pupil, what are their MCAS scores? North Attleboro is spending way less per pupil in Norton, but their MCAS scores are way higher. What's North Attleboro doing? That's, you know, that's the type of stuff that I think will be very beneficial to us. And then I think to Dinesh's point, you know, of like, you know, I, I talked about it last year with the MCAS too. It's like, it's the one all, you know, it's not the end of the story, you know, we talked about this at our meetings as well. It's like, it is an area that we get to see actual data, you know? We don't get to see any really other actual data on school duty, you know? You guys kind of tell us, oh, this is going well, you know, we graduated this many kids. I mean, we don't see data, you know? So I think that's where the MCAS comes in that's important from our side. I think all five of us are on the same notion that MCAS, no, as a graduation requirement, no. I think, but at the same time, there is important things about that, and I know you talked about it, great, that like, it is important, you know? It is a measure of what we're doing. We need to make sure we're not dumbing down that message in a way to be like, this isn't important, no big deal, whatever. Because it is, it is important what we do, you know? And again, I, I guess that data to me is more important to see what we are doing as a town compared to this thing, you know? And I think to Dinesh's point is our, you know, trajectory should be above everybody else. You know, we should be shooting for the stars, you know? I think we have to be realistic, but I think we also should be looking at it from a standpoint of, what's everyone else doing, where are we falling, and you know, how can we get back? Because that's the ultimate goal here.
All right, on that note, anything else?
Wreaths Across America on Saturday, beginning at 12 at Central Cemetery.
Right over here, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was able to see the truck today be delivered. The truck, I had to recent, so I was one of about a dozen people on the town comm. Police escort, fire department was outside, I saw a couple pictures there, so.
That's awesome.
They are at the, at the highway department now to be distributed Saturday beginning at...
Penguin Patch is at the LG on Saturday as well, from 10 to 1. So yeah, so if anybody wanted to bring their kids and they go shopping and trinkets and fun things, that's put on by the CPAC.
Awesome. Anything else?
Glad for that.
All right. Ready to go? What should do with your...
So move.
Second?
Second.
I was a favor. Hi, thanks for coming, we've been staying so long.